We'll just wait for Aaron to tell us when he's about to go live, Chair, and then we'll start.
Yep, I can confirm that the live stream is now started.
Thank you, Chair.
Good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock today, Thursday, the first of October. Items one and two on the agenda will be taken by Mr Jeremy Ward. So over to you for apologies.
Thank you very much, Chair. So in attendance tonight, we have councillor Sue Bagshaw, councillor Steve Carr, councillor Tim Hallam, councillor Richard Jackson, councillor Eric Carey, councillor Greg Marshall, councillor Jill Owen, and councillor Philip Owen, councillor Paul Simpson, councillor Williamson. What I didn't add there was that councillor Jill Owen was as a substitute for councillor Mel Crowe, and councillor Janet Patrick is also a substitute for councillor Marie Hannah. As for declarations of interest, councillor Carr has declared an interest in item six, which is the devolution and local government structural reform. Could you just explain the nature of that interest, please, Mr councillor Carr?
Yes, I always think it's appropriate that when you're dual-hatted, you should declare that you're also an elected member of the council.
Thank you, councillor Carr.
I'll declare the same interest, Jeremy. I'm advised it's a personal interest.
Thank you very much.
And I was as well for saying completeness. I don't think it's necessary, but I will.
Okay.
Councillor Carey here, I'll do the same, although I don't think it's relevant.
No. Okay. Well, thank you very much to councillors Carr, Jackson, Owen and Carey for those declarations.
And of course declarations of members of the Beeston Town Centre Board as well.
Sorry, that, yes, that's me as well, and sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Greg Marshall is on the Beeston Town Centre Board as well.
Thank you. I've just noted those. Thank you very much, councillors. And councillor Eastham has now joined us, I can see. Councillor Eastham, are you, I see the councillor Eastham is not declaring.
We always have the same thing about liberty leisure, but I don't think this applies in this instance, so we've had no notifications, so I think we're okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Eastham. Back to you then, Chair, thank you.
Thanks very much. Item three, then, the minutes of the meeting, on pages one to four, were asked to confirm as correct record the minutes of the meeting are on the first of July 2020, and I'll formally move those.
Second that, Mr Chair.
Any questions or comments? If not, then can we move straight to the vote? Mr Jeremy Ward, please.
Thank you very much. Councillor Sue Bagshaw.
Four.
Councillor Carr.
Four.
Councillor Eastham.
Four.
Councillor Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Jackson.
Four.
Councillor Carey.
Four.
Councillor Marshall.
Four.
Councillor Owen.
Four.
Is it my name or sorry? Is it you, Jeremy, or is it Philip?
Uh, sorry, I, yes.
I, I think I wasn't there.
Right, thank you. Councillor Jill Owen. Councillor Julevich.
Four.
Councillor Simpson.
Four.
Councillor Williamson.
Four.
And councillor Patrick.
I abstained because I wasn't there.
That's carried, Chair.
Thank you very much for that. Now we'll move straight to item number five on, uh, four on tonight's agenda, which is the leisure facility strategy, set out on pages five to 108. I will ask Deputy Chief Executive to serve few words, then we'll move over to, uh, to the consultants, but just before I do, to, uh, to ask people to note particularly a reference to page five, Chilwell School are actively seeking funding and ongoing discussions are with the school regarding the building of a, uh, a new school facilities on there, which we're hoping to support. But before we open this up to a general debate, on the recommendations tonight, we're asked to note the contents of the facility strategy resolved to procure external professional financial advice to assess the financial implications and risk associated. Uh, we're also asked that we consider whether the site options for a leisure centre site in northern part of Blackstone wishes to explore further, and that we continue to work with Chilwell School. What I want to do tonight, uh, for all members is to say that I want to establish an all-party task and finish group to work with the consultants and put forward recommendations to, uh, Policy and, uh, Performance Committee to enable us to, uh, to take a better informed decision where we know more about the outcome, in particular the needs of Chilwell School. So if the opposition members would, would, would give their support to that tonight, uh, all of you, I can work with the leader of the opposition and gather a suitable task and finish group to meet the consultants and financial advisers and to make those recommendations independent to tonight's meeting, to a future meeting of Policy Resources Committee. So I'll formally move that from the chair.
Second that.
Any questions or comments before I move on?
Chair, it's Greg Marshall.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Just as a point of accuracy and transparency, the actual minute on page five, the actual report, you'll say in the penultimate paragraph that, um, as Chair of Finance, I've met with Chilwell School, um, as, as part of, uh, those discussions. That, that, that isn't correct.
No.
Um, I haven't met with Chilwell School, uh, and indeed if I did, I would be declaring an interest as well because of I'm a Vice Chair Governor at Chilwell and Chair of the Business and Finance Committee. But that's, that, that, that just needs correcting in that, in that page.
That will be corrected, as well as the Chair of Personnel Committee.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Councillor Jackson, if you could give your indications whether or not you'd support the establishment of a task and finish group to, to act on behalf of the Policy Performance Committee to, uh, to make those recommendations to a future meeting?
Yeah, happy to. That's sensible way forward.
Yeah, I think so. The circumstances, with the extension to the COVID in particular, has made things extremely difficult, uh, to, to manage. So I think a small task and finish group would be an ideal way forward, and I'll endeavour, if this recommendation is accepted tonight, to talk to you as soon as possible about the establishment of this, uh, task and finish group and its membership. So over to you, Deputy Chief Executive. You're muted.
Apologies, Chair. Uh, thank you for that. And pleased to report the consultants have now concluded their work. Sadly, it was delayed a little bit due to, due to COVID. They've done a thorough, detailed forensic piece of work, looking at sites in the north and the south. Uh, so I do hope that members can give it some thorough consideration. In terms of, uh, the next steps, what Nick will do, he'll, he'll summarise the report, uh, over, over around 20 minutes, and then we will open it up for questions. Just to, uh, report back to the members, uh, we are still having ongoing discussions with Kimberley School, which are progressing well in terms of agreeing, uh, a new community use agreement. That, that's, that's going well and should be concluded at some point over the coming weeks. And the other point around Chilwell, that's just around, making sure we stay in touch with them as they seek their funding going forward. So I'll leave it there and hand over to Nick Trim, who's a consultant from Continuum, who's led this piece of work, who'll talk you through a summarised presentation of this lengthy report. Thank you.
Thank you, Zolf. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm going to, um, share my screen. Um. Can everybody see that? Can I get that? Can everybody see the screen? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Brilliant. Okay. Um, as, as Deputy Chief Executive, we're going to run through our, um, uh, this strategy in about 20 minutes. Myself, I'm Nick Trim, Director at Continuum Sporting Leisure. My colleague Paul Kelly will also go through some of the financial details. And so we're going to go through just in terms of a, a number of, um, uh, topics that are very interesting. As the Chair has said, this kind of task and finish group to take forward some of those recommendations, which is very positive. And so this first slide, um, is just to cover the, it's a very busy slide, just to cover the stakeholders and partners that we have spoken to. Understandably, we're a project of this size and the nature across the whole of the borough. We've sought to get views from many partners across the county, across the city council, across neighbouring authorities, and also the internal departments here and partners, important partners, the schools that we've mentioned, uh, that have been mentioned in the, uh, the preamble to the presentation. We've also been looking at all the needs of the governing bodies and the leading sports in terms of that background and analysis. We also undertook a, a fair amount of consultation, some very positive responses, uh, in terms of surveys that we sent out. Uh, over 400 responses from the survey. Two hundred and ninety-three of those were from users of the, um, facilities. Um, and we also ran a non-user workshop here, a picture of us at Middle Street Resource Centre, with some very positive feedback from those people, uh, not regular users of leisure facilities within the borough. Um, a lot of the survey responses were heavily weighted from Brancot, uh, users and responses, so we, uh, we've taken that into account. But we generally got a feeling of a positive view. Uh, there's obviously issues around the rating of facilities, the majority saying from average to poor. Um, so there's obviously a positive view of the leisure provision, but a clear undercurrent of wanting to see improvement and development there. So running concurrently to our consultation was a site analysis and site review across north and south, the, uh, the man-made division of the borough, as we, as we all, uh, as we all know, in terms of the catchments and the facilities. Across the north, we can see the sites there, there's Hall Park, Walker Street, Griezly Sports Centre, Coronation Park, Hall on Open Space, the Council Depot, Kimberley Leisure Centre, and, uh, what is, was the former, the former project at the Oxanane Site, because we were approached by the land development agent, uh, thinking about getting that site, uh, going again in, in some shape or form. And the south, southern sites covered Ilkerson Rec, Bramcut Leisure Centre, Chilwell, uh, Chatwin Barracks and Toten in terms of the sites, uh, available, uh, and sites agreed, uh, with the planning department and the property team as we did that. So we undertook some site visits and reviews of those sites in terms of their capacity. Each of the sites were agree, uh, were assessed under an agreed criteria that we agreed with the project team in terms of ownership, uh, location, development potential and development costs, uh, or likely costs in terms of anything that prohibits development. Um, and they were weighted and again agreed in terms of the work that we did with the, uh, the property and the planning team. So I'm going to run through some of those sites. Um, and I'm going to talk through, uh, some of the issues and the evaluation of those. Um, each of those sites, as you'll see, in terms of dotted around the southern area of the borough, uh, we'll start with these southern sites. Um, each site was reviewed in terms of its capacity for a leisure, uh, leisure provision, uh, and a footprint and a kind of extended offer of what's at Bramcut at the moment. Um, very important and it's quite helpful to have that discussion around Chilwell beforehand. Chilwell was not assessed, um, because of the aspirations of the school to redevelop their site. So we did have discussions with the head teacher and the, and the business manager there. Um, so we haven't assessed that for new provision. Um, we, we are aware that, you know, they are very keen to re-provide community sports facilities there, and the need is there in terms of dry side facilities, uh, down in the south with, with all the population increases. So the sites we've evaluated, if you've seen the report, so apologies for the small text, but you'll see the scoring there. Um, we have, uh, rated and scored those sites. Um, for the south is clearly in terms of, you'll notice that there's two options for Bramcut School, uh, sorry, Bramcut Leisure Centre and the Bramcut, former Bramcut School, uh, which we'll come on to in terms of those options. And it was the highest scoring of our sites to, to, uh, use the current Bramcut site or the larger footprint with the car parking, uh, with the council having more control. But there is an opportunity or potential opportunity which needs further viability checking in terms of, uh, the potential on the former Bramcut School site and the proximity to the park, uh, which I'll talk about. Um, Ilkston Rec, uh, there was talk of the town centre bid there, uh, which, which moved that forward, but obviously that's quite a challenging small open space. Uh, and then Toten and the Barracks obviously earmarked for other development, which, uh, may preclude, uh, would preclude the development of leisure potentially. So Bramcut is our leading site. Um, if you see on the, uh, on the left-hand side of the, uh, the picture, uh, you will see the two sites, the two options, uh, where we've got the existing leisure centre and the former school site. And then the top right-hand side of the, uh, the diagram is the option to extend, uh, a new leisure centre onto the current car parking site. Uh, this would require a temporary car parking site being developed on the other side of, of the, of the roadway, uh, on the White Hills Federation land, but we have discussed with them and they are amenable to that as a temporary opportunity, a temporary option. Um, and then the other option, uh, would be to develop on that, uh, former school site, uh, a bit more complicated. And we have, uh, earmarked that as a potential mixed-use development, uh, and the potential to have leisure and residential as a mix there. But again, these are just site capacity tests and options to look at that in terms of the, uh, potential re-provision, uh, of Bramcut Leisure Centre. And we move on to the northern sites, a bit more complicated. The north in terms of opportunity sites. Um, so we could, looking at the, uh, the, the sites that we've listed before, and you can see there, um, it's obviously across, um, uh, two, uh, you know, kind of split population areas, uh, in terms of the towns. Um, so we've looked at those sites and looked at the opportunities there. Um, and in terms of our scoring, again, uh, it's very small text, you will see in a bit more detail in the main report, which you can access. Uh, but in terms of capacity, uh, and access, uh, we've looked at the Griezly Sports Centre site as an opportunity site. Uh, it's a current, uh, community site, the sport site there as well. We've looked at then the next high scoring is the Council Depot, uh, the opportunity and the capacity to develop something there. Uh, then we've looked at Kimberley, um, the current site in terms of redeveloping there, uh, and then Hall Park as another opportunity. Hall Park, obviously, uh, with Griezly slightly further over in terms of the other, uh, than the western side of the north, uh, site. Um, so just to run through the Council Depot site, we've looked at the capacity of developing, uh, leisure footprint on there, an indoor leisure, obviously not replicating outdoor leisure there. Um, and then, uh, the space left for, uh, a reconfigured depot. We know that there's a lot of, um, uh, opportunity to consolidate some of the depot provision. What we haven't looked at within this study, because of the focus has been on leisure, has doing, uh, you know, any kind of re-provision of the depot. Uh, so there was previous work done in 2018, um, in terms of comparison to other depots redeveloped. So if that's an option the council want to look at further, then obviously there's, um, issues that need to be looked at in terms of the re-provision of the depot site. Um, but in terms of them, uh, co-locating as services, the depot during the daytime, uh, and, uh, the, uh, leisure centre operating more peak times in terms of evening and weekends, there is an opportunity for that site to work together. Griezly Sports Centre, I must say, in terms of our consultation, we haven't consulted with the parish council or, or the project team with the council and ourselves, haven't, haven't consulted with the parish council at this stage. We are just testing the site space and capacity as one of our options. Um, so clearly it has, um, opportunity to re-provide on that site. Um, it's well connected in terms of public transport, uh, so there's the opportunity there to look at that. And we've tested the capacity with some initial options. Kimberley, as our, uh, as clearly as the current site, uh, we've looked at the opportunity of redeveloping. Um, it is, uh, it is tight site, whilst it has a fair bit of green space, but it's a very well-used, uh, and large school in terms of the opportunities there. So we've looked at one option in terms of that site. It's very difficult to fit in a new centre in terms of access. We'd have to go through the whole school site, and we know that that, there, there's the talk of the tram link going to the north of the site, immediately to the north, uh, there. So there's options there in terms of fitting that into the site and the key challenges there, uh, but it's still in the consideration in terms of those options. And then Hall Park is our final site in the north, uh, we've looked at in terms of those options there. Um, uh, clearly it's a bit further away in terms of the catchment, and, uh, we know anyone that's tried to traverse the borough on that, uh, on the main road, uh, the traffic can, can be problematic in terms of getting from one place to the other at peak times. Uh, but however, it does have the capacity and the space to do that, and it's a site that the council own. There would be some compromise on playing pit space, uh, but that's not insurmountable in terms of the development opportunities. So that's the sites, that's the sites that we've looked at. We've got some clear leading priorities in terms of, uh, Bramcut, in terms of the options to do it on the current car park site, whilst you keep the current site in operation to reduce any, um, uh, lack of, uh, business continuity. Uh, and then obviously the opportunity to do the former school site, um, and, uh, mixed-use development there to be looked into. Uh, clearly a lot more complicated in terms of the options there. Uh, in the north, the, the, the three leading, uh, parts would be obviously Griezly in terms of that opportunity to create something on that site, the depot in terms of reconfiguring that, and Kimberley to look at, the new build we've looked at, but also consideration in terms of the economic issues around refurbishment of that. Uh, obviously the depot carries with it additional cost to re-provide, uh, the depot reconfiguration as well as the leisure. So I'm going to pass over to my colleague, Paul, uh, in a second to talk through some of the financial implications that we've looked at in terms of, uh, options to be developed. But just to recap in terms of those leading sites, um, it, it's well documented in terms of the, you know, the age of the facilities and the need to refresh and renew. The standstill position for the north i- is not viable anymore for the council. We, we need to look at that in investment into new provision or refreshed provision. The refurbishment at Kimberley option, we've looked at in terms of some outline costs. Um, there is limited income generation opportunities from that because of the, the, the age of the site and the tightness of the site and the facilities. And we know that Liberty Leisure are doing, uh, you know, a very good job, obviously, some interruption with, with regard to, uh, uh, COVID-19 and, and opening and, uh, reopening and remobilising. Uh, um, but the new leisure centre that we've set out and that Paul will run through in terms of the revenue position set against the capital costs and financing costs, uh, we have assessed. Griezly, as I've said, has capacity. Uh, the depot again has capacity, can be delivered, but we have an additional cost associated with that. And then we've just, uh, reviewed the kind of deliverability of a new build at Kimberley, uh, current site. Uh, and, uh, finally, the Hall Park site does have capacity, but it has a challenge in terms of its location. The south, uh, again, in terms of the age of the facility, the standstill position, uh, for Bramcut is not viable in terms of the scale of refurbishment, uh, and, uh, the impact that would have. But the new build option, one site can generate some capital potentially, but that's obviously the full viability is unknown at this stage. Um, but the current site has the capacity to develop and retain the operation at the same time, uh, through, uh, through use of the car parking site and some of that, uh, some of that extended site. And then we've looked at the issues around capital financing position and the influences and impact on other issues such as, uh, residential issues and highway issues as part of our financial, uh, review. So I'll pass you over to Paul, uh, who will cover some of the, uh, financial, uh, implications, uh, and then I'll come back on to talk briefly around kind of risks and next stages.
Hi, thanks, Nick. Are you able to keep sharing the, uh, presentation for me?
Yeah, just tell me, just give me the nod as to when I need.
Can you pop that next slide? Can you scroll slide down?
Yep. Sorry, it's just frozen for a second. Just bear with me.
I'll just, while Nick's having a few issues, uh, just to set out what we've looked at, we've looked at three scenarios for each, for the north and for the south. We're looking at a, a do minimum option, which effectively is carrying out essential repairs only just to keep the, the facilities up and running for another fifteen years or so. We've then looked at a refurbishment option, which effectively looks at, thanks Nick, looks at, uh, effectively sticking with existing facilities, but doing some, uh, redecoration and improving the physical environment, looking at things like reception and changing rooms, but not really adding any additional facilities. So sticking with existing footprint. And then the new build options for the two, for the north and the south are effectively, uh, complete new builds, uh, swimming pools, new gyms, studios, uh, cafes, that kind of thing. And then we've compared what it would cost to build those, those, those three scenarios. So we worked on the basis with, with QS input. Uh, just highlight the fact that we only have limited information on the current state of the facilities, uh, at Kimberley and Bramco. And one of the recommendations, or the next steps would be that there's more detailed surveys undertaken just to identify the, the detailed costs of, of refurbishing the, the two sites, uh, although we are conscious that they are, would, they do appear to be on their, their, their list at this stage. So in terms of, we've, we've then looked at financing, the costs of the investment, and that's based on the council borrowing the money. Uh, we're looking at thirty-year loans at, at three percent, uh, on the new builds and the same percentage over fifteen years for the refurbs on the basis that it's unlikely we can extend the life of those buildings much beyond another fifteen years. And then we've also assumed that the, the two sites, that we would be able to, uh, secure funding from, from Sport England, uh, for those two sites in terms of the new builds. Uh, the council wouldn't be able to secure funding from Sport England just for the refurbishment, because it's not delivering anything, any added value. And we've also factored in the impact of having to close the facilities if you refurbish them. And we've worked on the assumption that the do minimum, they'll be up to a six-month closure, and the more extensive refurbishment, the facilities would be out for around a year. And we factored in the income impact of that, and also the, the cost associated with redeploying the staff. So in terms of the north, the north, uh, we're looking at a, a position of a do minimum. The, the total project costs are only about £586,000 a year, a refurbishment, uh, six, six, five thousand a year, and a new build, uh, would be the more affordable option, uh, on the basis that it would, uh, although it's got some higher build costs, it would improve the financial position at the moment. Uh, Kimberley does generate a, a, a loss in terms of its operating costs, uh, being run by Liberty. And we've assumed that a new build, looking at, uh, based on our knowledge of other facilities, that it would generate an operating surplus to help offset some of those financing costs. Can you go down to the next slide, Nick? And then for the southern, we've assumed on, again, a do minimum, uh, four point eight million, a more extensive refurbishment, around eight million. Those costs obviously would need to be looked at in more detail with, with proper surveys. And a new build around the ninety million pounds mark. Uh, again, we've assumed a million pounds Sport England grant. And then we've, uh, in terms of the development of the former site, that there may well be, uh, the opportunity to secure some, uh, contributions from, from a development of that site. So we've put some initial valuation costs in there, uh, of two point five million. So, and then again, uh, we factored in the impact of the closure of, for a do minimum and a refurbishment option. Uh, again, on that basis, we do know Bramcut at the moment makes a small surplus for the, uh, for Liberty. Uh, we've assumed that a refurbishment would help slightly improve that position, and then the new builds would improve that position significantly. So going from a fifty thousand surplus at the moment to over three hundred thousand pounds a year, uh, which would help offset the financing costs. And again, looking at those options, the do minimum is the, the cheapest option, uh, but obviously there are risks associated with, with that, with that, uh, whereas with the, the northern project, the, the most affordable option was the, was a new build. You go down on this slide, Nick? Just to kind of put, put some context around the, what, what might be possible, uh, we've just brought up some examples of, uh, facilities that we know, uh, have been delivered in, in the last few years, something we've been associated with, uh, which give you kind of indication of what might be deliverable. Uh, so we've got, uh, example there, Stone Leisure Centre in, in Staffordshire that was open last year, was eight million pounds, uh, which is twenty-five metre pool, learner pool, a, a, a gym and two studios. It's kind of comparable in scale to Kimberley without the sports hall. Uh, the Thameside Wellness Centre in, in East Manchester, which is fifteen million pounds, uh, slightly more extensive facilities, uh, more studios, also a spa and a soft-play facility and some indoor bowling. But again, that was only fifteen million pounds. Uh, I think it's worth highlighting that the figures we've put in at the moment that came from, uh, the QS are relatively cautious at this stage, and they've got contingency in there just to cover some of the risks and that. I think the, the hope is that, uh, any new build would, would come in, uh, at a lower, a lower cost. Nick, do you want to scroll down to the next two examples? And then two, uh, two examples from, uh, Samwell, uh, in Birmingham. Tipton Sports Centre, slightly older, but that's, uh, a eight million pound project. an eight-million-pound project, two pools, a large gym and a studio, and Wentworth Leisure Centre, which was £10 million in 2015, which is two swimming pools, a large gym, three studios and a small sports hall. So I think that gives a flavour of what might be possible for the new build facilities. And just to kind of highlight the implications, if you could come in lower than the projections that we set out in the report, for every million pounds you save on the build costs, it would save about £50,000 a year in financing costs. So if you could, I think we've got Kimberley at £40 million, if that came in at £10 million, that would save £200,000 a year in financing. And if the new build at Brancot, which is currently £90 million, came in around £50 million, that would save another £200,000. So potentially £400,000 in financing costs to save each year. Nick, do you want to go down to the next slide? So just to kind of summarise the scenarios and the impact, the management fee at the moment is about £845,000 a year, of which just over £300,000 of that relates to Brancot and Kimberley. And these are just revenue-only costs. It doesn't include any capital costs or financing costs. So in terms of the scenarios, the new build options have the potential to generate net surplus of about £400,000 a year. So that's an improvement on the current position of about £700,000 a year revenue. In terms of the standstill patch-up do minimum scenario, you're looking at about £900,000 a year in terms of the revenue and the cost of financing that. A refurbishment scenario is about 1.4 million, and a new centre scenario would be 1.2 million. So it kind of gives an indication that in terms of costs, the new centres are relatively affordable compared to the refurbishment and standstills. There isn't a huge difference. It's only about £300,000 against the standstill position. So I think if it was the scope to generate savings on those new builds, then effectively you can remove that gap completely. And I think that doesn't take, that's just financing implications. It doesn't take any account of the benefits, the social value, the health benefits that would come from having new builds and generating more footfall. And I think just to highlight the fact that the original costs when the service was transferred to Liberty was just about 1.9 million a year. So effectively, it would still be cheaper than you were spending on your leisure services at the time of transfer if you delivered those new builds. Nick, I think that's hand back to you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Paul, for that. So as Paul said, you know, those options and other examples, you know, there's an opportunity to reduce that gap in terms of the figures that we've set out. But as Paul said, there's an imminent kind of opportunity for looking into that in more detail. I just want to cover a few risks before we kind of summarise on kind of the next steps. And clearly, we've set this out in a bit more detail within the strategy, but I think there's key risks and the question in terms of, you know, should we be doing this in terms of the current situation, very challenging health, social and economic situation that we're all experiencing. There is obviously a risk associated with the leisure industry and the impact that's been felt across the leisure industry. But we are, you know, we are planning for projects which will happen three, four years down the line. But one of the biggest issues is about the investment into the health and wellbeing of your communities in Brancot, in Brockstow, across both the two sites that we've talked about. You'll see issues around capital development, any economic impact in terms of the, you know, impending key economic challenges that will be coming in the autumn and winter. So there's obviously risks associated with that, which the council have to look at very carefully. And then obviously, the council budgets, the impact on that in terms of borrowing and, you know, the public loans, work loans board. But if you don't move on this, and it's an issue which has been, you know, rearing its head for many years across the council, obviously, the Kimberley management situation, as Zolf said, you know, there's positive discussions going on. There's always a challenge in terms of dual-use sites, in terms of that future, in terms of investing into, on school sites. The Kimberley facilities and the Brancot facilities, we've looked at the kind of longevity and the value for money in terms of investment in those current facilities. And then there's the issue around the continuing cost of a declining service. We know that there's a plan in terms of the recovery process with Liberty Leisure and the cost savings that need to be found. But that's going to be even more challenging with ageing buildings. So the key kind of next steps and key issues. Just bear with me, this seems to have frozen again. But the key issues that are presented in terms of the recommendations for the south, we're very keen in terms of the issues around the further financial analysis on the opportunities for developing on the, on the site, the school site, whether or not those and the chair and Zolf also mentioned the issues around further commissioning of financial support separate to our work in terms of looking at the viability of that. Then there's the further issues around the surveying work that needs to be done for the, for Brancot. And then in the north, there's obviously the further discussions around negotiations with Kimberley School to secure that, you know, a new kind of dual-use agreement for the following years to protect that activity there in terms of community facilities and activity when you look, and now when you start looking at options for the new site. There's clearly the recovery process with Liberty Leisure to be looking into and the opportunities to make sure that that is addressed. There's a need to look at the further condition surveys for Kimberley to ensure that it's very clear on the kind of longevity of the current facilities there. And then, you know, the recommendation in terms of the opportunities at Griesley to be considered and consultation with the parish council. And then finally, the issues around the depot site. You've gone on to mute there, Nick.
Nick, you've been muted.
Sorry, is that better? So the key thing is, I've just run through those. The key thing is that investment is required. The facilities have come to the end of their economic life, and we've worked closely with the council and Liberty Leisure in terms of looking at, you know, driving as much value for their operations as possible. But the need is really to invest if the council want to maintain that provision and the importance of the provision for the local communities. And the key thing really, as Paul said, is that the opportunity to re-provide, the opportunity to re-provide leisure facilities, you know, we're not interested in kind of selling this kind of big dream that everything can be all brand new and shiny if it's not affordable. So we are, the issue is the need to invest in those facilities and invest in the communities and the health and wellbeing. And the role of you as council members across the different parties and the high-ranking officers here is to make sure that you are making the lives better for those communities within Brockstow. COVID-19 is exposed to health inequalities across the board really, and leisure, health and wellbeing are now serious contenders for contributors towards the recovery of the country. And the key thing is, the issue is around that, you know, is to retain or renew is looking very similar in terms of the cost to the council over the longer term. And as Paul said, if there's an opportunity to reduce those capital costs and the estimates, the prudent estimates we've put in there, it could be cheaper to re-provide high-quality facilities to affect the health and wellbeing of the communities in Brockstow for years to come. So many thanks. That's the conclusion of our presentation.
Thank you very much for that, Nick. And I'm sure it's a lot of food for thought there for members. But I hope members understand now with the complexity of the issues, particularly around COVID recovery, and the likelihood of a potential further lockdown impacting on the council's ability to provide leisure facilities, and what those leisure facilities will look like if you're going to a second lockdown. I'd like to establish a small cross-party task and finish group to study the financial options and look into, to look into further detail, particularly what these options are. But before I move into that recommendation, which is moved in seconded, is anybody who'd like to raise any specific or ask any specific questions or make any specific points in relation to the documents that we've placed before us tonight?
Yes, I'd like to just ask a question if I can, Chairman.
Yeah.
Council Kerry. Nick, thank you for your presentation. I'm just interested in some of the numbers and some of the, the figures for income and income generation from the right choice of activities that would form part of any development. There doesn't seem to be from the, just the do very little scenario to investing a lot of money, a great difference in income generated from that investment. Can you explain a bit more about that, please?
Yeah, Paul, you okay to pick that up?
Yeah, we've been relatively cautious with the figures. I think the, we've, I think we've worked on about 10, 15% growth in, in the main income drivers, fitness and swimming. Your Liberty performed quite well in terms of some of their activities at the moment, particularly at Brancot. So we didn't, we were being relatively cautious, but I think there probably is scope to push those figures a little higher. I think there's scope for generate a bit more of a saving, but I think there is scope to improve the income. I think once we, you do the next stage of the work and do some detailed demand analysis, then it would be possible then to have a firmer figure around some of those figures and growth. But I think it's just worth flagging up that the centre's actually quite well used despite their condition.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Can you please shout out if I can't see you? Raise your hand. Any member wishes to ask any questions?
Yeah, Paul Simpson.
Paul?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. It's probably a question more for Zolf, this is, of how or about the funding of building two new leisure centres, how do we afford it? Can we afford it? And, you know, how does it work out? Because I presume that you must have done some preliminary working out on that.
So just to help councillor Simpson, we're not suggesting we build two leisure centres at the same time. This will be a phased approach. And any large, complex construction project, before we move into each stage is a gateway. So there'll be a financial due diligence done around the business case. And if it is, as councils have said, in a positive way, and it shows a net surplus based on a sensitivity analysis, then we will progress to the next stage. There's a number of hoops to go through before we push the button. And that's why we're really keen on getting some expert financial advice on the Brancot options, because that's probably more closer to commencement than the option in the north. So there's a number of different gateways around projects before you push the go button. An important part of that is affordability and doing that financial analysis with external expertise. So that's the next step.
Councillor Owen?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I've read this report from cover to cover and have spotted a number of errors in the report on things that I know about. And that gives me great concern as to how many mistakes and errors and misinformation there might be in the rest of the report on things that I don't know about. I don't think it's very good to come to a presentation or such as this with a report that has got a number of inaccuracies in it and not just proofreading inaccuracies, which I wouldn't expect anyway. So I make that point first of all. I hear that the deputy chief executive officer called it a forensic report. I'm not sure how forensic it is in those circumstances. But there are one or two other points that I would like to make. We've heard reference to a declining service, which I think, quite honestly, is a little bit of an insult to Liberty Leisure and the efforts that they put in in recent times. And we've also heard that the situation is not viable. They're at the end of their economic life. I can't recall now whether there's been a detailed condition survey undertaken of both the Kimberley Leisure Centre and the Brancot Leisure Centre. And I mean, a real detailed condition survey. And if so, I would like to be reminded of what those condition surveys say to justify those particular comments. There's reference in your report to the Brancot School Site. I'm assuming from the map that you put up, you're referring to the old Brancot Park School Site. Now, that is part of the White Hills Park Federation. That is land that is leasehold to the school from the county council. So that isn't mentioned. So there would be, shall we say, interesting negotiations to be undertaken with the county council as far as any access to that land whilst concerned. You refer to the survey that you undertook amongst existing users. And it was interesting, if I've added up the figures correctly, that you've presented, 81% of those that you surveyed viewed our facilities and service as either good or average. Now, you might like to say, well, average is not good enough. But nevertheless, it seems to be well-accepted by the overwhelming majority of people. And the improvement in performance by Liberty Leisure would, I'm sure, justify that. Now, you seem to be preferring Griesley as the number one site for development in the north of the borough, which is interesting since you've had no contact, official contact with Griesley Parish Council. And this is theoretically will be the first they've heard of it, which, quite frankly, I think is a very poor state of theirs in terms of communication. But what you've not also mentioned in terms of the Griesley site is that there's already an existing facility, a mugger facility on the site, which is a joint-use facility between Griesley Parish Council and Nottinghamshire County Council on behalf of the Griesley Bow Vale Primary School, who use that extensively during the day. And perhaps more interestingly, that mugger has a noise abatement order on it issued by Brockstow Borough Council because of the, because of the noise that was generated from a mugger, from a mugger alone. So have you taken into consideration the additional noise that would be created by the building of a leisure centre there? And the likelihood that Brockstow Borough Council would almost certainly have to issue a closure order on its own leisure centre because it's breaching the noise regulations. Now, none of that is mentioned in this forensic report. So it comes down now to Kimberley, the existing school site or the depot site. Well, the depot site is an interesting one. That is clearly under the control of Brockstow Borough Council. But we have the front of the site where if you were to have this brand-new £15 million leisure centre, you would want it on fronting the main road. You've got a caravan park there. It's a caravan sales business, I believe, which certainly I, as the county councillor, have asked counties' economic development officers to look for a more appropriate site. But I understand they are reluctant to move. So I'm not sure that that is the best site for any future new build. And so it brings us back to the Kimberley School Site, which of course, as you've said, is a joint-use site. Now, we have a school that is more than willing to cooperate. Clearly, there've got to be negotiations. There are, there are always negotiations. The school are keen, I know this, wearing my other hat, the school are keen for leisure facilities to continue at that site. And it is a large site. Now, you do mention that the tram might be Now, you do mention that the tram might be going to the north. I don't know whether you meant through the, the school site, but you can forget about that. You most certainly can forget about the tram. Nobody in their right mind would support a tram going through that part of Brockstow. So there are no insuperable obstacles to developing a new build at the existing Kimberley Leisure Site in conjunction, consultation, negotiation with the East Midlands Educational Trust. And that would be my preferred option if we are to go ahead. Thank you, Chairman, for indulging me in those few comments.
Thank you very much, Counselor Owen. Have any further questions or comments? Counselor Hallam?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I think that this is a really good start to, to, to looking at, looking at all of the options. I've enjoyed reading this report. There are, there are some options that I'd considered that aren't in here. Certainly I'd be interested to find out at a later date more about the waiting system use, so why, why certain sites were eliminated early days. However, you know, it's, it's good. It, it gives us all something to look at for the working group. And certainly Counselor Owen's given me food for thought on this as well, because I hadn't considered that the existing school sites in Bramco would involve having to deal with the county, because nobody wants to have to do that if they can help it. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, man. Yeah, we had a very positive preliminary meeting with the school, you, myself, the Deputy Chief Executive and one or two others. I was disappointed we didn't carry that on. The, the outcome, and this was in June, the outcome was we were going to meet again before the end of term. And I appreciate things moved on at some pace with the COVID crisis and other things. I thought there was a lot of common ground there and a lot of goodwill on both sides to get to something, and something seems to have slipped in the, in the meantime. But I think there's something to be rescued there. I hope there is. You probably remember I asked the school directly whether they were interested with the right sort of long-term joint use agreement or lease whatever in place in those building or jointly building some sort of leisure facility, new build on the site, and they were. And I appreciate that's a long way from getting a settled legal agreement to do it. To me, that's, that's, that's the ideal solution for leisure in the north. I think there are limitations with all the other sites that we look at. And I have real reservations about splitting it from a wet side and a dry side on different sides. I, I welcome your suggestion that, that we have a, a members' working group to get into a lot more detail, because I don't think we can do that justice in this forum this evening. Certainly we'll be involved in that. The Bramco site seems a complete no brainer to me. It's the perfectly sensible way to proceed. I understand that the kind of schematics that are in the report are just a sort of desktop exercise of overlaying a typical leisure centre onto what's around.
Yeah.
The particular one that's in the report, I don't think works. There's, there's a particular, there's, there's semi-mature self-set woodland and all sorts of issues. I wouldn't want to see it put where it's planned to be. It talks about then wherever the new centre would go, replacing the old centre with a, what I assume would be a surface level car park. Now, to me, when, when we looked at this previously, I think that's an incredibly valuable site with brilliant transport links and would lend itself to, if you could get access off the island to which could well actually fund a huge part of, of building a new leisure centre. And although we don't want to see the greenbelt parts of that site developed, I think something that's sympathetic close to the island, maybe I should declare an interest because I live a few hundred yards away, but I don't think it matters, I think could fund a lot of that. So we could look at a decked level car park or something like that to minimise the amount of space we're wasting on car parking and, and maximise the amount of space we could generate capital receipt from. So I think, I think that's, that's quite straightforward. I kind of don't agree with Zulf when he says we want to develop one and then move on to developing another, because if there's a business case, I would have thought, and I understand we've got to, we've got to finance this. If there's a business case, so if, if borrowing the money, improving the, the income and reducing the running costs pays for itself, then I don't have a great problem if we can raise the capital in, in doing two at once, or at least, you know, starting the second before the first is finished, because we're probably looking at three to four year project from beginning to end. And I wouldn't want, I don't think Kimberley's going to wait that long, quite honestly. So I, I, I think we could do these, if not at the same time, then they could certainly overlap and we shouldn't rule out doing that if we can make it add up. The last thing we want to do, the last thing we can, we can afford to do is for Kimberley Leisure Centre to close, or at least parts of it to close before we've got a replacement, because you've lost your customers, they go somewhere else and then, you know, we're creatures of habit.
Oh, we're aware of that, yeah, yeah, yeah. I agree.
So, so, you know, I, I wouldn't rule out doing the two at the same time. But no, look forward to, to
No, well, I, I rule nothing out and nothing in with it at this stage. You know, I think it, it needs that close analysis. And, and when this report was being drafted, we were into a COVID and then there was an emerging leisure usage. If you remember, there, there's a centre in swimming that just opened again. Now, the potential is that we may be in another lockdown situation prior to Christmas. And, and so the situation changing that much, I think it needs a much more detailed look at the emerging leisure market versus the, the new provision and, and the, the numbers. So that's the reason why I suggested an all party working group, have a task and finish group, have a look at the figures in detail. Take the opportunity to look at the recovery strategy and health benefits and major government policy and criteria and come back to committee with some recommendations that we can then properly debate. Yeah. Counselor Easum, are you in favour of that?
Absolutely, but could I have my opportunity to speak as well, Melon?
I've never denied you the opportunity to speak, ever.
This is true, this is true. You wouldn't expect me as being the ward member for Kimberley not to speak in favour of Kimberley, which, which I will do. And I think that the, the survey etcetera, I've read, the way, the weighting that was put in the report again, again, I fear was a little bit, maybe a little bit contrived, possibly. I think that with, with the Kimberley Leisure Centre, if we can work with the school, there is a lot of opportunity there. I see from the drawings that we had to put the new leisure facility on the school playing fields. So if that is a potential, but we can work with the school and we can maintain the original site, then that means that we have a lot more potential for scope on that side. But further to that, you've also got a situation that Kimberley Town Council own the adjacent site or, you know, well, it, it borders on and they have a football facility, a mugger facility, bowls, et cetera. Now, tough times, I'm sure they would be quite happy to talk to us and maybe that could be brought into the, into the scheme as well. And also, we did also look when I was, whilst, obviously it's in my wards, so working with Liberty Leisure, that we did identify that on the site, at the north of the site, east of the site, east of the site, there's an area between, next to some football, some five-a-side football pitches, that we could get around 80 more car parking space on and an area that's used at the moment just for sand edding, a, a, a bank of earth. So there is quite a lot of potential on that side. So obviously I do support that, that this report and I support the, the working group as long as we have a good look at Kimberley. Thank you, Chairman.
Nothing will be rolled in and nothing will be rolled out.
Well, I can ask, I can ask no more, Melon. Thank you.
For the working group, we'll look what is in the best long-term interest of residents of Brockstow. Counselor Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to echo that, I, I think we, we need to look at every option. Would be stupid not to do. And, but I, I, I hear what the opposition councillors are saying, and I agree with a lot of what they've said, but they do need to remind themselves that we did receive a letter from EMET at the height of the pandemic, given us notice to quit. And whilst our negotiations are amicable and are going relatively well, we can't forget that. And that, that has soured relationships to a degree. So we have to be realistic and also we have to make sure that what is done is for the best of the borough and for the north of the borough, not just for EMET. And let's not forget, you know, we've actually had already to give up some of the, the services we were providing at Kimberley School a month ago today. And as things stand at the moment, we're still on the notice to quit the site in 18 months' time.
We are.
So we, we, we can't forget that. We'd be stupid to forget that and we'd be stupid not to look at other alternatives to Kimberley as well as looking at the Kimberley School Site.
Can I, unless has anybody else got any burning issues they wish to, to raise? Counselor Owen?
Yes, I just want to come back on that point because it really is disingenuous. The school wanted to change the arrangements. And the only way that they were able to change the arrangements, when you've got a, when you've got an agreement in, in place, is to say, right, let's, let's end the agreement that we've got and renegotiate and come to a mutually acceptable new arrangement. The school don't want Brockstow Borough Council to quit. They want to work with the council to provide facilities for residents in the north of the borough and also to the benefit of the young people in the north of the borough. So let's put it in perspect, it into perspective and stop talking about souring of relationships. The school are positive and clear in what they want to do.
I'm sorry, but that is not the only, you bring, that is not the only way that you bring an agreement to, to an end. It's certainly not the way that Kimberley School have gone about it, Mr. Chairman. Let's, sorry, Chilwell School have gone about it.
I know, but can, look, can we stick to what's on the agenda tonight? I've moved the recommendation, it's been seconded, to establish an all-party working group to continue to look at the Bramco site options and then to consider the options in the north. And that we also work with Chilwell School to assess the leisure facilities option that the new school and bring it back to this future meeting. That's been moved and seconded. Unless there's got anybody, someone's got something new to contribute, I'm now going to move to the vote. Right, Jeremy, I'm going to move to the vote. The, the recommendation is that we stick with the basic principles outlined in Items One and Two, Recommendations B and C, and that, and that we establish a task and finish group, all-party task and finish group, to provide detailed information regarding the financing arrangements and preferred site options in the north and south of the borough. That's, I now call for the vote.
Thank you very much, Chair. So Counselor Sue Bagshaw?
Four.
Counselor Carr?
Four.
Counselor Easum?
Four.
Counselor Hallam?
Four.
Counselor Jackson?
Four.
Counselor Carey?
Four.
Counselor Marshall?
Four.
Counselor Philip Owen?
Four.
Counselor Gilovich?
Four.
Counselor Simpson? Counselor Simpson?
Four.
Counselor Williamson?
Four.
Counselor Patrick?
Four.
And just to clarify then, Counselor Philip Owen?
Four.
And Counselor Gil Owen?
Four.
And that's carried, Chair.
Thank you very much for that. I'll, I'll notify all those group members. I'll try and do it this weekend or before the end of next week to establish that. It, it may take me a few days next week to get the arrangements in place, but I'll try and contact Counselor Jackson, Counselor Carr and the independents as well to set up that group, okay? And moving on then to Item Five, which is Beeston Town Centre redevelopment on Pages 109 and 110. Mr. Dar, would you like to take us through the report? You've muted.
Thank you, Chair. This is our regular update on the progress with the Beeston Town Centre redevelopment. I, I'm pleased to report it's progressing well. We're, we're on track to hand over the, the building to the Arc Cinema near the end of December, at which point they will continue, they will commence fitting it out with the views opening i- in around June 2021. So that's going really, really well. And we're hoping next week to have a, a, a large, exciting communication, sharing the exciting designs in the cinema with, with the wider public. In terms of the residential sale, we're still on track to have that complete by the 4th of November. During the exempt session, I'll give some further, more detailed points on, on, on the, on the development. In terms of the letting age, we do, we have had some tentative interests with, with, with our particular units. And again, I'll talk about that during the exempt session. I'm also pleased to report that at the Community Safety Committee, we agreed to, to the provision of some, some new public toilets funded through ITPS money in, in Beeston. There, there's still a really major risk around the financing of the project due to the really troubling time we have with the food and beverage market. And again, I'll give some scope to size that risk during the exempt session. But the big picture is on track for delivering the project by the end of this year with the views opening i- in the middle of the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zarren. One of the great comments about this, it's on time and it's on price. Can I ask you to look at the recommendation on Page 109, set aside to note the report and any further verbal updates provided and to resolve to continue to screen with delegation? I'll formally move that.
Second, that was Chair.
Now, I'll throw it open for questions or comments. Counselor Jackson?
Yeah, thank you. Before I start, just to tell Counselor Tyler he's sharing his screen with us all.
And Eric is as well. Counselor Carey?
No, 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 we've got Eric on camera, but Ian is actually sharing his screen with the meeting. Anyway, I'm sure somebody can help him sort that out. No, it's great to see the progress on site. It's quite incredible actually to see that it's only a matter of days and weeks behind schedule, given everything that's happened in the last eight months. So good to see it in its current state every time you, you go through Beeston. We can talk more obviously in the exempt items about what it looks like, some very encouraging news about lettings and some, some quality offerings as well there, which is, which is great to see. I know there's a project board coming up in a couple of weeks and, you know, all credit to Zulf and to David as well, and obviously through B and K and Faithful and Gold for keeping things on track and keeping us informed of what's going on with it. And look forward to sharing a popcorn with you when we can meet in person.
If, if we ever get to, yeah, if. Anybody else got any further questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair? Just really again to echo what Counselor Jackson just said, that it's absolutely remarkable that we are still on target time-wise and financially-wise, given the circumstances that we've been operating in since the beginning of March. But I think that's, as, as Counselor Jackson pointed out, is all credit to the different companies, agencies, consultants that we're, we're using. And the fact that we do keep a, a very, very tight communication going on a, on a cross party basis, which is on these sorts of level of investments is absolutely vital. And I am confident that when all this is all over, whenever that might be, that this will be an absolutely fantastic asset for the town. We are, have been picked as a, as a more superior inside interior other than the one at Hockner, which is also nice. So they obviously have confidence in Beeston. So I think we should have a lot of confidence in them.
Thank you very much for that, Counselor Carr. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, Chair, I'd like to, it's Counselor Greg Marshall, I'd just like to echo the comments of Counselor Carr and Counselor Jackson there and, and pass on the, the present congratulations to the project team and the officers who've worked hard to get us into this position. There is more detail in the exempt items, but the, the, the overall picture, which is particularly pleasing, which could go some way to helping dispel some of the social media criticism we've got, is the, the very small net exposure risk that this authority held for a number of years into the future, even under the current situation. And whilst there may be some hiccups and challenges on the way, that has got to be a significant positive for this project, unlike other authorities and, and indeed the financial status of, of, of councils not a million miles away from here. That is a really positive story, that our exposure is, is very, very small in that sense. That is a really positive story that our exposure is very, very small in that sense.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Marshall. Any further questions or comments? If not, the recommendation on page hundred nine has been moved and seconded. All those, sorry, head over to Mr. Ward for the vote. All those in favour then.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Sue Bagshaw.
Four.
Councillor Carr.
Four.
Councillor Easom.
Four.
Councillor Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Jackson.
Four.
Councillor Carey.
Four.
Councillor Marshall.
Four.
Councillor Philip Owen.
Four.
Councillor Jilovic.
Four.
Councillor Simpson.
Four.
Councillor Williamson.
Four.
Councillor Patrick.
Four.
And councillor Jilowen.
Four.
That's carried, Chair.
Thank you very much for that. And moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is agenda item six, which is a devolution in local government structural reform. Chief Executive, would you like to introduce this item?
Thank you, Chairman. The government are expecting at some future point, hopefully not too distant, to publish a white paper on devolution. And although we were expecting to see that in the autumn, the indications are now that it might be early in the new year, we're not yet entirely sure. But in advance of that, as members are aware, the leader of the county council has written to the Secretary of State expressing her view that a county unitary solution for local government reform is the right option and should be pursued quickly. The leaders of all the district councils and the city council have written a letter expressing their view that should local government reform be considered in Nottinghamshire, a unitary county option should not be the only option which is considered by the Secretary of State. And with that in mind, the district council leaders have expressed a view that any future work on local government reform in Nottinghamshire should be done collaboratively, working with all the district councils, the city council and the county council and major stakeholders in the area. If that is to be done, it will require some money, which we don't currently have allocated in our budget estimates. So the recommendation in this report is that members recommend to the finance committee a budget of up to thirty thousand pounds in order for Brockstone to be a participant in that collaborative work. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that. Before I open this up for general comment, I'd just like to say that I would like members, if possible, to stick to the item, which is, which is recommendation to finance about the establishment to enable work to be carried out, to look at and to work with other groups and organisations, including the county, to look at options for future of Nottinghamshire. And I understand that the legislation is likely to be delayed by at least a year now, although that official announcement's not, that's the talk on the district councils network and to the minister today. If that's the case, then I want to change the wording slightly in the recommendation and I'll move an amendment to do so, is that the committee recommends to the finance and resources committee that a supplementary allocation of up to thirty thousand pound be established, if necessary, for the commissioning of work required in conjunction with a view of local government structures in Nottingham. So I'm just adding the word if necessary. If the legislation, primary legislation regarding the local government reorganisation devolution bill is actually put into the long grass like we're led to believe it were today, then it will not be necessary. But that's there in case we need to engage further, any further works, any consultants and work within internal resources to look at local government reorganisation in Nottinghamshire. And I want people to stick to this item.
And I'll second that, Chair.
Right. Any questions or comments? Councillor Jackson.
Thank you, Leader, and I'm very happy to stick to the agenda items in front of us. If I could just correct something that Chief Executive said. So we were told that the leader of the county council has written to government requesting a consideration of a single unitary for Nottinghamshire. It's not the case. So the county council has written to the Secretary of State asking for an invitation. So it would require the Secretary of State to issue an invitation for all councils within the area to look at options for reorganisation. When the county previously had options worked up and it was Deloitte who did it, a single county unitary came out as the, as the clear preferred choice in terms of the services it would deliver and the services that it would that it would deliver. That business case has been reworked. I don't, I don't think for a minute it would say anything different this time, but at this stage, no one's asked for a single or a double or a triple unitary or anything else. Just the opportunity to look at reorganisation. So actually, I welcome the paper as it is in front of us. My one concern is the city. And I'm told by reliable witnesses that you I think the word was exploded, I might be wrong, at a meeting when it was suggested that you supported the city council expanding its boundaries into into Brockstone. So I think it would make sense to add into the recommendation something along those lines. So whatever solution comes forward doesn't include the expansion of the city. Or if it does include the expansion of the city, it certainly doesn't include the expansion of the city into Brockstone. I don't particularly.
Can I just correct you, before you go, I can correct you on that. That's not quite what's happened. And if you've ever seen me explode at somebody, you'll know it was certainly no explosion. You never hear me shout and you never hear me rant at anybody, ever. What I did tell the city council to the face, not behind the back like some do, was that any expansion into the district boundaries would, whether it be Brockstone, Ruscliff or Gedlin, would not be supported by me and I would oppose totally an expanded city, particularly if it was based upon the need to repay their own debt and their own economic recovery and the county's economic recovery from the previous crash that was built on a mountain of unsustainable debt. That's what I told them. Now, let's get that right before you say I exploded. No, I didn't. I simply told them to their face in no uncertain manner. And I don't believe in talking behind anybody's back. I told them to their face. So that was all, councillor Jackson, just to correct that.
Okay, no, absolutely fine. And I'm pleased to hear that. So I think we can add something into the recommendation that just firms that up makes that official. And with that, more than happy to support the recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Owen?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I think we are more or less at one on this then. Because my great concern was when I saw the letter that was issued by the district councils, released by the district councils, including the city council, that the only thing that the city council wants, because of course they are a unitary authority, so there's nothing in it for them as far as that is concerned, the only thing that they want is to expand into the outlying areas, which for as long as I've been in politics, in fact, from the time I was in short trousers, that is something that they have been wanting to do. So I would think there is no harm in following councillor Jackson's suggestion in actually putting something in the recommendation so that we are crystal clear and residents of Brockstone, and particularly areas such as we represent, which would be vulnerable to an expanded city, to give them reassurance that local government reorganisation, whatever their view on it, will not include any support from Brockstone Borough Council for an expanded city. And I think that would be a clear statement in a resolution, which I would be able to support unequivocally.
I'd like you to add that wording, if you'll give me time to look at it. And but I think you can trust me by now. But I would like to reiterate the fact that while some does may talk behind people's backs about expanded cities and things, I took the decision to say it to the face. As the Chief Executive can probably verify, it was quite a difficult conversation that they had to endure. But councillor Carr?
Yeah, I, I don't want Brockstone to become, or any parts of Brockstone to become part of the city either, but that is not what this item on the agenda is about, Mr. Chairman. This is about us as district councils working together to put forward our own plans, if we're asked to do so, by, from the Secretary of State. And I don't feel that we should include anything in the recommendation which contributes to the county versus city battle that's been continuous for many, many years. I think the recommendation is absolutely fine as it is. Whether we agree or not with city expansion, and I don't agree with it, and neither does the Liberal Democrats, I think it's a separate issue for what we're discussing tonight.
It is, councillor Carr, but I'm quite happy to, I'm quite happy to state our position quite clearly, which is that the city boundaries remain within its own defined boundary. I'm quite happy to add that to the report or to the recommendation. I really am.
Chairman, can I suggest a way that you could do that? And that is to leave the recommendation as it is, but to add a supplementary to it in another, in another statement that this committee does not agree with any, with any boundary change with the city that would result in Brockstone ending up within the city's boundaries.
I was hoping we could avoid a debate around the semantics of how we deal with the recommendation, but it's really quite, I'm quite happy, as I say, whichever way round people want to do it. Another recommendation be we can write to the Secretary of State on behalf of the Policy and Resources Committee. We can do anything you like to me, you know, I'm quite happy because the same position that I made abundantly clear was I personally, under no circumstances, would support an expanded city boundary into any of the districts, not just Brockstone, but in Gedlin and Ruscliff as well, you know. So I'd like to clear it with them that they're happy to support that before I send anything out there. Our other recommendation be and therefore resolve to write to the Secretary of State, to Robert Jenrick, and inform him of the fact that where we are. And I'll also write to my district colleagues and ask them to do the same. And we can make it clear then that we don't support an expanded city boundary, all three of us. Because I haven't had this conversation jointly with them yet. Any further questions or comments?
I'll second that, Mr. Man, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
You're not mayor, yeah?
No, that's my trick. I just keep, I keep calling Elizabeth Williamson Madam Mayor for some reason. I think it's age. There's no more. Can we move on, Mr. Ward then, for the recommendation? The recommendation, the wording is that it stands as it is the same. And I'll take those amendments that are talked about out, the Chief Executive's advice. And that we also resolve to write to the Secretary of State and to the leaders of Ruscliff and Gedlin Borough Councils, calling on their support to, again, to support writing to Secretary of State against an expanded city boundary. With that then, can we move to the vote?
Thank you very much, Chair. Councillor Sue Bagshaw.
Four.
Councillor Carr.
Four.
Councillor Easom.
Four.
Councillor Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Jackson.
Four.
Councillor Carey.
Four.
Councillor Marshall.
Four.
Councillor Philip Owen.
Four.
Councillor Jilovic.
Four.
Councillor Simpson.
Four.
Councillor Williamson.
Four.
Councillor Patrick. Councillor Carr and councillor Jilowen. Councillor Easom, that's carried, Chair.
Thank you very much for that and thanks, thank you for all your contributions so far. Can we move on then to item seven point one, which are noting reports. And the first one is the review of the corporate plan progress and financial performance. Chief Executive?
Yes, Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Any questions or comments arising from that report? First party report. If not, then can we move on to the use of emergency powers? Anybody know? Next is the Child Poverty Action Plan twenty twenty to twenty twenty two. And in doing so, can I thank A Hope on behalf of all the Members of Policy and Performance Committee, what I think is an excellent report. And it's a very eye-opening report, particularly when you look at the childhood deprivation statistics, not just in the north of the borough, but look at households with less than average and low income. You'll see the rise of things like Chilwell West, which really has increased quite dramatically, the numbers of people of children in relatively low or relatively low income families in Brockstone wards, which raises alarm now, as it seems to be worse than even places like Eastwood St Mary's, which has always had the assumption to be the area of high childhood deprivation. So there is a number of alarming trends within this, with this report. And I think it's an excellent report, well-written. And it serves to, for us to look at ways in which we can address the Child Poverty Action Plan itself and direct resources to those people in greatest need. Councillor Jackson?
Yeah, thank you. No, I welcome the report. As you say, it is a good report. It seems like an age since it came to committee and so much has happened since. But one of the things I raised when it did come to committee, because you rightly say there's, there's you know, hotspots, significantly high numbers of children in poverty in certain wards. But there isn't a ward in the borough without children in poverty.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and I recognise that you recognise that. One of the things I raised when it went through committee was, was it seemed at that stage that there was, there was, there were plans to work to alleviate it in those areas with high incidences. But it looked a little to me as though there wasn't in areas where there is small numbers of children in poverty. And clearly that was wrong and that's been tidied up in this report. So I recognise that and I welcome that because, you know, you might be one of very few families who've got children in poverty in what is on the face of it, an affluent part of the borough, but those children are still in poverty and still in our focus to try to, to address that. So this does that and I'm grateful for it.
Thank you very much for those comments, councillor Jackson. As I say, like me, I think most people were alarmed when they saw the huge increase in childhood and low income families, particularly in Chilwell West. It came as a complete shock to me. I thought it would be probably third worst or fourth worst. Thames Attic was by far had the highest number of children in relatively low income families. Councillor Carr?
Yeah, again, an excellent report. And I do agree with councillor Jackson that this is actually evened out the actions across the whole of the borough because, you know, whether you're a poor family in Beeston West or in Eastwood St Mary's, you, you know, you're a poor family, no matter where you live. But Chilwell West, of course, is a three-seat ward. So it's likely to, it's got more people there. So actually, it's on a par with Eastwood St Mary's and also Myleand and Barber's seat of Beeston North on two hundred and forty-three. But what we have to remember about Beeston North and Chilwell West is that there are some very affluent areas in those wards as well, which, which actually shows that the actual figure is probably even worse than it's showing on this piece of paper. Because you know, one side of the A fifty-two, around Middleton Crescent, you don't get much change out of nine hundred thousand pounds for a property. And yet on the other side of the road, we have some real pockets of deprivation. And very often, the relative affluence on the north side of the A fifty-two disguises that in figures. And it's exactly the same in Chilwell West as well. And but I have to say that this is an excellent strategy moving forward.
Councillor Marshall?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's good to see the report in that sense of the word and obviously, but obviously makes disturbing reading. The report is good in that it sets out a strategy, it gives empirical data. It gives definitions of the criteria that we're looking at. But the kind of glow in the mission to me is any kind of analysis of cause. And it would be interesting to see if. Um, and it would be interesting to see if we could have some expert view, either from officers or indeed other experts, to try and tell us, uh, what the causes of these figures are. Whether, it, it does reference some difficulty with trend data, um, in terms of comparison with, with previous data. Uh, I'm unsure about that. But we haven't got, um, kind of a, uh, an analysis from a Brockstone perspective about what we think are indeed driving some of these pretty disturbing figures. I wonder what, what, what we could do in response to that.
Uh, before I get, uh, Chief Executive to answer that, what I'd also like to do, uh, at a future meeting is
You muted yourself, Chair.
You muted, and, and actually look at what the impact is on people's, uh, health, particularly in response to the Covid. Whether or not the relative rise in low income families in Brockstone wards was also relative of the number of cases and incident cases in rises in Covid. Uh, it will be an interesting analysis to look at. But over to you, Rick, and I hope that you'll take our thanks back to yourself and to others who are the auditors of this report. It's an excellent piece of work.
Thank you, um, Chair. Um, yes, I, I, I think the, um, underlying causes are complex, and it would be wrong of me to give, uh, simplistic answers. I think as councillor Marshall suggests, um, there are a variety of contributing factors, uh, which will be different in different areas. Um, but, um, we will, uh, consider that challenge, uh, and see if we can come back, uh, with, uh, some evidence that can support, um, a, um, a little bit more information on, on underlying causes. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, councillor Owen?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Uh, I firmly believe that one of the, um, important drivers of child poverty is the question of education, lack of education or appropriate education. And I don't mean simply the number of people that get so many A levels or go to university. It's a whole question of the skills that we are equipping our young people with. And we've had a problem in Nottinghamshire for many years, where educational attainment was poor. And that has driven a cycle of deprivation, and it's extremely difficult to actually break that cycle of deprivation. I've spent seven of my last years on the, on the County Council, as you know, as, um, Chairman of Children and Young People Services. And one of the main drivers to what I've been trying to achieve is to drive up standards of education across the county. Now, clearly, uh, at secondary level, the county has nowhere near as much influence as it used to have because all but one school is an academy. Uh, we are trying, uh, and I know it's outside of the, the Brockstone area, but we're trying in the Ashfield and Mansfield area, uh, to work with the MPs there to drive the Skills Agenda. And that would permeate out, uh, in, into, into Brockstone. And, uh, although my views on HS two are well-known, I do sit on the HS two Skills Board, and that is one of the things that we have been looking at, how we can drive up the Skills Agenda. So I don't think, um, there is any short-term solution, it is longer term. And what the Chief Executive says is true, that, that there are complex factors. But I firmly believe that appropriate, high-quality education is perhaps, well, certainly in my view, the most important factor long-term in driving down, uh, uh, child poverty. Um, and that's what I, I think we can all work together on.
Thank you, Tom Reid. Any further questions or comments? Well, thank you all for your contributions on there, that was, uh, interesting. Next is the Annual Health and Safety Progress Report, any questions or comments? And then over to the Chief Executive for the update on the council's Covid nineteen response and implementation of recovery plan.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so this report is in several bits. Um, I do report first of all on, um, recent activity in Brockstone to tackle recent, um, upsurge in Covid nineteen positive cases. Um, and the initial upsurge in a few areas in Brockstone, uh, was tackled, um, quite successfully, and the rate started coming down. Um, more recently, however, we have observed, um, other increases. Um, and I, I'm afraid this is mirroring trends in other parts of the country. Uh, so we are, um, working, uh, as carefully as we can, um, to try to ensure that we target, uh, good communication and good enforcement into particular, um, areas, uh, in order to see if we can, um, help the, the containment, um, of, of the virus. Um, in particular, um, we have, um, had to take some quite, um, stringent enforcement action against one particular, um, premise in, uh, Kimberley, um, which was, um, not complying with the coronavirus, um, uh, require, uh, safety requirements. Um, and so a closure order, um, was obtained in respect of that, um, premise. Um, and, um, a, a, a review is taking place. Um, uh, the first review i- is to take place at the end of this week in relation to that particular, um, premises. Um, I think it, it has sent out a positive message, um, to, um, other premises in, in that area in particular, um, that, um, this council and the County Council are working together with the police, um, will not hesitate to take measures, uh, to ensure that, um, the regulations are complied with. Um, we have continued to, um, support, um, voluntary effort in Brockstone. Appendix three sets out the latest position in giving grants to voluntary organisations, um, which are supporting their various, um, communities, um, uh, in, in active ways. Um, and then, uh, Appendix four sets out, um, recent activity in implementing the strategy that the council agreed at its last meeting, um, as to how we, we would as a council, um, uh, support the recovery of Brockstone, um, both its economy and, uh, the environmental benefits that, that were seen, um, in the early stages of lockdown, uh, to try to support and encourage, um, environmental gain. And then, uh, finally, in relation to that social area, uh, supporting community and voluntary effort, um, and trying to, to look at how we can strengthen, um, uh, food banks, uh, and so on. Um, but also, um, developmental health initiatives and, um, looking towards the winter months, try to support people to ensure that they have enough resources, uh, to keep themselves warm in the wintertime. Um, so the, the report sets out, um, in bullet point form, a, a number of measures which have already been taken. The Jobs and Economy Committee has been particularly active, um, in pushing forward, um, the economic, um, aspirations of the council. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Councillor Carr?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, uh, another good report showing how busy we've been, uh, as a council during this very challenging time. Uh, particularly picked up on, uh, uh, an item, uh, with, in the economics section, Appendix four, which is that the MP for Ashfield has agreed to lobby on our behalf for, uh, town centre regeneration funds for Eastwood, which I think, uh, as well as Stapleford is essential for the borough, uh, moving forward. But perhaps on your next call, uh, Chief Executive, you mentioned again schools. Uh, I'm still getting reports of, uh, massing of parents outside of schools. Um, I had two phone calls from residents on Alderman Close, which is that one of the entrances to Beeston Field School, where there are up to twenty-five parents in close proximity to each other or chatting, waiting for the children to come out of school. Now whilst it's outside, that's a lot of people in close proximity with each other. Uh, so I, I don't know whether we, you could take that forward for me, uh, on your call.
Thank you, Chair. I, I did, um, take forward the last concern that, that you raised with me, councillor Carr, about that. And our, um, town centre information officers went, uh, to Beeston Field School, um, and talked to parents outside, uh, the gates. So, um, we'll make sure that happens with this other school as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Chairman. Uh, I wasn't pleased that it had to be done, but I was pleased that it was done. The fact that using the new powers that are invested, uh, I think in the County Council actually, but implemented in, in, in consultation with the district councils, that the offending premises in Kimberley have been closed. Um, in fact, paradoxically, it's not one that was, has been reported to me. I have had one or two other premises, uh, reported to me in Kimberley, and I have had no hesitation, whether it's smitching or not, I've had no hesitation in passing on that information to the Director of Public Health and to the Chief Environmental Health Officer here. You know, it's, it's, it's not a difficult thing to understand why this wretched disease is being passed on. It's simply the poor behaviour of a limited number of people. And I hope that closure does send out a message that you will have my full support in closing any other premises for any length of time and implementing any appropriate fine within the legislation to send out further messages to those, to those places that will not obey the rules. I'm one of those vulnerable people, I'm sure you are now, Chairman, as well, with the health conditions that you've had. I've got a lot of life I want to live, and I don't want the actions of a few idiots to, to curtail it. Although there are some that might think that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Councillor, and thank you for your supportive comments. Right, but can I just let you know that, uh, today, uh, all residents in, in Eastwood, uh, in Eastwood, uh, St Mary's and Eastwood Hilltop, I've received a, a letter from the Borough Council and the County Council today, setting out, uh, the, the social distancing measures, the rules and regulations, particularly where there are spikes, and I've talked to Communications today about the potential for other areas, especially Kimberley and Watnall, uh, being sent out a letter as a reminder too. So we are closely monitoring the situation. And if, if it appears that we are getting increases in Covid, we will, we will make specific targeted leaflets to those areas based around obeying the rules on social distancing, washing hands. So they are, they will go out, uh, uh, if we see that, or we think that the rise is, is going up simply because of lack of, of obeying the guidance or the law as it is now. And, and you quite rightly say, councillor Owen, we, we have closed, our County Council has closed the public conjunction with, with the police, but there are others as well that are pending, uh, further action, visits, uh, or else. Now, it's not our intention to close down any business, we've tried, as it is in the police. But you're quite right, there are some that think that the law doesn't apply to them. Yes, it does, and will be applied unequivocally to the maximum. Safety of our residents has got to be paramount. Councillor Jackson, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you. I'll follow on from that. I think it's important to just, uh, to say there's an awful lot of very, very well-run establishments in the borough.
Excellent, thank you.
Of, of, of perfect practice in the way that it's going on, but there are still some very badly run ones. I heard anecdotally of one today, not too far from, uh, from here. Um, the inspector, that, that, when he came and updated the Community Safety Committee, I'm not sure he knew he was on a publicly stringed meeting. It was perhaps a little intricate in naming several establishments, and I won't name them again. But I wonder if the Chief Executive's got any updates on those establishments? Because clearly, uh, a number of members were concerned about, and the police were concerned about them. I know licensing were as well. We've had this rule of six, which does clarify things for people. Uh, and I wonder if we've got any update on those premises, uh, in the last few, uh, weeks. Um, I should say I've been in communications with the city and, uh, uh, and with Tram Link about real concerns over overcrowding on trams, which is still going on. Uh, I had a bit of a, of a, um, half-hearted, uh, response through the City Council, which although they are taking some action, um, they make the point that it's the Tram Link to do. Well, I don't really think that's good enough, quite honestly. And I suspect if it was our responsibility or the county, something would mean them about it by now. Um, so, um, I mean, obviously, it, it, it's, it's going to need to be under constant review of some other issues, but I think it comes under the later item and the exempt, uh, information about the, um, the testing sites, I'll save that for then.
Yeah, okay. Uh, if you would please, yeah.
Can I just back, Councillor Jackson, up in that with regards to trams? The lack of wearing of face masks as well on the trams is a huge worry. I have two, two residents in, uh, our ward who are tram drivers, and they have next to no powers. I mean, very often, there's only one person driving the tram, and that's it.
Enforcement, yeah.
And, you know, uh, there's no enforcement at all. And, uh, he will say every tram that he drives has at least one person that hasn't got a face mask on it.
The one, the one part that I've forgotten, apologies. Again, um, at that Community Safety meeting, Chief Executive mentioned there was going to be a members briefing with the university, which I don't recall having been invited to. Did it take place? And are there any updates on it? Because I know it really concerned a lot of residents. And in particular, the complaints I've had about the tram are from, probably from older people, uh, further on the line in, in, in Chilwell, and particularly in Chilwell West, who just don't catch the tram now and don't feel safe. Because particularly, I think because of the way the university's operating at the moment, remote learning, there are lots of students. And I don't want to demonise students, but there are lots of students crowding onto the trams. Uh, it's not just a case anymore of being able to avoid rush hour and knowing that the tram will be, will be safe and, and almost empty at any time of the day. When it gets as far as at the end of, um, University Boulevard, it can get absolutely crammed full, uh, and, and residents, particularly, uh, as I say, older residents just don't feel safe, you see it.
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure he's copied and unencithened.
Um, Chair, if I can just respond to some of those points. Uh, first of all, I can assure, um, councillor Jackson, uh, that following, uh, the referrals by, um, him and councillor Crowe of their concerns about various, uh, premises, and we are aware that councillor Owen also expressed concerns. Uh, these premises have been visited, they've all received joint inspections, uh, from the police and licensing teams. Uh, and, um, following the changes to the regulations, they've all been written to, um, as well, um, telling them explicitly, um, what the, what the, um, new requirements are, so that there, um, is no excuse for not knowing what, what the new rules are. Um, also, um, councillor Jackson, there, there was, um, a briefing, uh, from the university, but the university are very, um, willing, um, to do more, um, briefings. Um, and I, I will ask if they can arrange, uh, further briefings, uh, for councillors. Um, and, um, I've made a note of your concerns about the tram, and I will make sure that these are, um, referred, um, to, um, the, uh, the next, um, meeting, um, in Nottinghamshire when we discuss these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much, uh, Chief Executive. Are there any further questions or comments on this item? If not, then they're all noting reports. Are they all duly noted by members?
Noted.
Thank you. Then to item eight, which is the Work Programme, on pages, uh, hundred and thirteen and hundred and fourteen. The Work Programme sets out the, uh, the basis for the next works. Uh, but what is key in there, of course, is to ensure that the Covid recovery strategy.
You're in charge now, Jeremy, come on.
All right, so.
Finally, that plan's worked, Jeremy.
It's been a long time coming. If we just, uh, if we just pause the meeting just for a second, and we'll see where councillor Radulovich is.
Oh, sorry, I'm back. Okay. I'm back. Isn't technology fun?
Yep, go on, we can hear you. Yep.
Yeah, okay, so the, the Work Programme then is proposed on page hundred and thirteen, uh, hundred and four. So if any questions or comments, I'll not, we'll straight to the vote then.
I'll second it, Chair.
Move straight to the vote then, Mr. Ward, Jeremy Ward.
Thank you. So councillor Bagshaw?
Four.
councillor Carr?
Four.
councillor Easton?
Four.
councillor Hallam? councillor Jackson?
Yeah, four.
councillor Kerry?
Four.
councillor Marshall?
Four.
councillor Philip Owen?
Four.
councillor Radulovic?
Four.
councillor Simpson?
Four.
councillor Williamson?
Four.
councillor Patrick?
Four.
and councillor Gil Owen.
Four.
That's Kerry Chair.
Can we move on then to item nine, which is exclusion of publicly compressed? The two items about to be discussed contains exempt information as defined in the Local Government Act 1972 and paragraph three and six being Schedule 12a, the act. I'll formally move that.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you. So councillor Sue Bagshaw?
Four.
councillor Carr?
Four.
councillor Easton?
Four.
councillor Hallam?
Four.
councillor Jackson? councillor Kerry?
Four.
councillor Marshall?
Four.
councillor Philip Owen?
Four.
councillor Radulovic?
Four.
councillor Simpson?
Four.
councillor Williamson?
Four.
councillor Patrick?
Four.
and councillor Gil Owen.
Four.
Chair, if we could just pause for a second until we have confirmation that the live stream has stopped?
Yeah.